At City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Senior Pastor Drew Travis with the First Presb- I'm sorry, Presbyterian Church of Granbury to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our Mayor Pro Tem Tony Mobley. All rise please.
Presbyterian.
There you go.
Thank you. There'd be more of us if more people could say it and spell it. Let us pray together. God of grace and God of glory, God of creation and God of life, cast your presence on this assembly as those elected come to debate and to reason and to decide. Grant them wisdom and keen insight. The decisions made will strengthen our community and nurture the ties that bind us together in this place. May all those who call this place home be represented in conversation and compromise and concern for each citizen. Mark this meeting with integrity and kindness and a spirit of what is good and right. We pray you be present this night in the workings of this body and in the life of this community. Be present with us, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Now if you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with whom ever be in justice or wrong. And now the Texas Pledge. Our Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, Texas, one nation of God, indivisible.
At this time, we have a presentation, and this presentation will be given by Michelle McKenzie. She's with our Clean Air Coalition.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council members, for the opportunity to present to you this evening. I am Michelle McKenzie. I'm with the Air Quality Program Manager for the Hood County Clean Air Coalition. And I'd like to talk to you tonight about the TCEQ Rider 7 Air Quality Planning Grant that will provide funding for air quality planning for Granbury as well as Hood County. And I will try to make this quicker work, so.
Get right up close to that mic there, so we can all hear you, Michelle. Thank you.
Okay. First off, some background information about the Rider 7. The Rider 7 Air Quality Planning Grant began in 1995 with the rider appropriation to support local air quality planning in near non-attainment areas in the state of Texas to aid in attaining the federal ozone national ambient air quality standards. The grant continued to be funded each legislative biennium with revisions to amounts and areas eligible for the program. The program was eliminated from TCEQ's budget in June 2017. Granbury was added to this program in 2013 and continued to be part of the Rider 7 until the program ended with the governor's veto in 2017. In the spring of 2019, the most recent Texas Legislature reinstated the Rider 7 Air Quality Planning Grant with modifications to eligible projects. So in talking about air quality, for the North Texas region, this is usually referring to ozone. So just to kind of give you some basic information about what is ozone. It's actually formed by a chemical reaction of nitrogen oxide and volatile organic compound emissions in the presence of heat and sunlight. It's the main component of smog or air pollution, and it's also an irritant for the human respiratory system, aggravating lung diseases like asthma, emphysema, and chronic bronchitis. It's also one of the six criteria air pollutants listed in the Clean Air Act. And if you can look at this diagram, hopefully you all can kind of see through there the different sources of VOC or volatile organic compounds, as well as NOx emissions or nitrogen oxide. Basically, anything with a tailpipe or anything with an emission pipe, industrial sources. So in discussing the Clean Air Act, ozone is one of the six criteria pollutants listed in the Federal Clean Air Act that are targeted because of the danger to human health and the health of the environment. The other criteria pollutants that are listed are carbon monoxide, lead, nitrogen dioxide, particulate matter pollution, or PM, and sulfur dioxide. The Clean Air Act requires standards for these criteria pollutants that are protective of public health and the environment. These standards are periodically reviewed and may be revised, typically about every five years. So the most recent ozone standard was done in 2015, and that standard was set at 70 parts per billion. The previous 2008 ozone standard was set at 75 parts per billion. And if you look at the diagram that's up there, Hood County is currently at 67 parts per billion as of through the end of August 2019. The standard is considered to be met by an area based on the design value of a monitor in the area. The design value is a statistical value that is a three-year average of the fourth highest reading at a monitor. And current design values are based on monitor data from 2017 through 2019. And that data is always certified the year after, so these are all not certified data. So in discussing ozone attainment and non-attainment, an area is considered in attainment of the ozone standard if the design value at the area monitor meets the current standard. If an area does not meet the current standard, then they are considered non-attainment of the ozone standard. Because these standards are meant to be protective of human health and the health of the environment, areas that do not meet the standard, non-attainment areas, face varying requirements based on the classification level required in the law. Texas currently has three areas that are designated non-attainment: the Dallas-Fort Worth, Houston-Galveston-Brazoria, and most recently Bear County. States are required to submit designation recommendations within 12 months of a new standard, and then EPA does designations within a year after that, so within two years of the new standard. So this is a map of the current Dallas-Fort Worth non-attainment area. The area that's outlined in black is actually the Metropolitan Planning Area for the North Texas Central Texas Council of Governments. The kind of gold-colored counties are actually the non-attainment area. Those are the areas that are not currently meeting the 2015 ozone standard. And you can note in that map that Hood County is adjacent to two non-attainment counties. So in discussing ozone non-attainment areas, there's five different classification levels that EPA uses to classify an area. And these are progressive, beginning with marginal, moderate, serious, and then it goes to severe and extreme. And as I said, these are progressive, so what happens with marginal becomes included in addition to the things for moderate, and then in addition to the serious. For marginal, they give you three years to attain the standard. You have to do emission inventory work. You're required to report any major source emission statements. And there's also non-attainment new source review permitting and offsets with the offset ratio of 1.1 to 1, meaning for anything that emits one ton per year over that limit, you have to offset that by 1.1 tons. It also requires conformity, which ensures that transportation plans are consistent with regional air quality goals. And there also is the possibility of an inspection and maintenance corrections that may need to be done. With moderate, of course, it includes all of those things, but then you have a little bit longer time, having six years to attain the standard. And progressively, with serious, it goes to nine years to attain the standard, as well as all these other previous things that were considered. And then, of course, finally, you have severe and extreme levels that are, of course, increasing in requirements as well. DFW area was recently reclassified to severe for the 2008 ozone standard because they didn't meet the attainment date for the previous being labeled as serious. They are also classified as marginal for the 2015 ozone standards, so they are currently not meeting two different standards that they have to do requirements for each of So the Hood County Clean Air Coalition was formed in 2012 when Hood County was first facing the possibility of a non-attainment designation for the 2008 ozone standard. The coalition-led participants, excuse me, led participation of Hood County in the EPA Ozone Advance Program for near non-attainment areas as an indication of a willingness to work to keep Hood County in attainment of the ozone standard. This is a stakeholder group of local government officials, including representatives from Granbury, Toller, Crescent, Hood County, as well as local citizens and businesses who would be impacted by a non-attainment designation. The coalition has acted to oversee air quality planning for the county since its inception, including overseeing the county's participation in the EPA Ozone Advance Program for near non-attainment areas, as well as the previous TCEQ Rider 7 Air Quality Planning Grant. So some of the projects that we completed under the TCEQ Rider 7 include technical work to understand the ozone issue for Hood County. Just as one of the things that we did learn is that ozone is primarily a result of transport, meaning that those emissions are coming, the ozone itself is being transported into Hood County from other places, but we still have emissions that contribute to the ozone formation here as well. So some of the technical work that we did, the ozone conceptual model, as well as photochemical modeling, emission inventory improvement, as well as evaluation of NOx emission trends using satellite data. In addition to that, we had several other projects that we did. We've maintained a website with air quality information and links to the above-mentioned technical work, as well as providing public service announcements on local radio stations, Granbury TV, as well as local magazines. Also, anti-idling signs were installed and decals were provided for city vehicles. Siree bikes for the Granbury Bike Rental Program were also purchased, as well as installation of propane fueling stations for the City of Granbury, as well as Granbury ISD. We also did a public electric lawnmower exchange program, and we helped in providing replacement propane riding mowers for the City of Granbury, Granbury ISD, Hood County, as well as the City of Toller. We've also done several outreach events, including Granbury's Community Appreciation Day, Earth Day at Weatherford College from 2015 through 2017, and the STEM Mania Event at Weatherford College in 2016 and 2017. So after our funds from Rider 7 were removed, we were able to approach the North Central Texas Council of Governments, who was able to help us with a one-time grant funding to kind of tide us over in hopes that the Texas Legislature would bring back the Rider 7 or something similar to that. So under the NICCOG grant that we currently are operating under, we offered, we were able to offer continued maintenance of the website, as well as continuation of the public service announcements with the local radio, Granbury TV, and local magazines, Granbury Showcase, as well as the Weatherford Now Magazine. We also continued outreach at public events, including Earth Day at Weatherford College, as well as the STEM Mania Event at Weatherford College. In addition to that, we also participated in, or aided in participation in submitting a grant proposal for the City of Granbury through the Volkswagen mitigation plan to work on replacing the city's trolley with a propane-powered trolley. So for the 2019 TCEQ Rider 7 Air Quality Planning Grant, the Texas Legislature appropriated $4.5 million for 16 near non-attainment areas, including Granbury. Each area is going to be allocated $281,250 for the 2020-2021 biennium, which runs September 1st, 2019 through August 31st, 2021. The projects that may be included in this grant funding include monitoring, emission inventory work, as well as administrative cost, which is capped at 10% of the grant. TCEQ expects contracts to be in place with the areas by the end of 2019 and work with the grant to run from January 2020 through August 31st, 2021. So this is a proposed budget that we've come up with. Of course, this is subject to TCEQ review, as well as approval. As you can see, there's some money in there for admission inventory review, as well as admission inventory development, as well as some NOx monitoring project and additional air quality monitoring, and of course, the administrative expense. So the TCEQ Rider 7 Air Quality Planning Grant for 2019 will financially support continued research and monitoring to address the ozone issue in Hood County. It will allow for stakeholders in the local community to stay engaged on the issue as the ozone air quality standards may change in the future. And it also ensures that Granbury and Hood County are aware of the status of the air quality locally and in the nearby DFW non-attainment area. So this is a quick overview of the air quality issue for Hood County, as well as the 2019 Rider 7 grant. And thank you, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
I'd just like to give a little more history for some of you in the room and maybe some newly elected. This program was created years ago to help us countywide.
2012.
Yeah, 2012. Mayor's been vitally involved in it since 2012 to help us not become a non-attainment county. Should we become a non-attainment county, your inspections on your vehicles would go up to about $50 instead of the $7. There'd be all kinds of emission equipment they would check and ensure that it's working properly. And so that's a financial impact you would see locally as a citizen that drives and registers your vehicle in Hood County. The other side of the coin is economic development. If we are a non-attainment area, that will, we've got a little step up on our competition in the region because they are a non-attainment area when someone's coming in that needs to have some type of an emission. There's all kinds of standards to ensure that they don't emit pollution into our environment, but if you're in the non-attainment area, there's all kinds of more layers of bureaucracy that they have to go through to get the permit. So that's two of the things that come to mind the fastest. Now then, on the budget that she presented, obviously, the administrative cost is not enough to cover the fund, to cover the program. She didn't bring that up, but I told her to put this together, and I would. And so we've seen a lot of good come out of this program. And in the next couple of meetings, I need to work with the Hood County Commissioners' Court as well to see if they're interested in. And I've asked Michelle to come to our meeting on October 15th, that we have the workshop with them and show the same thing, so that they will see. They're all new to this program too, and they need to know the history and the benefits and what we've done, and help make a decision on how we may be able to continue this program. Obviously, $28,000 isn't enough for the admin, for the rental space that she has, and the telephone fees, the electric bills, and then her salary.
That's happy with them, yeah.
So we're going to need to look at figuring out some creative way to pull this together. I've got some ideas that we could do to contribute in kind costs and things like that, but we need to, you know, let you all know what's going on, and that's the purpose of this presentation. No action needed tonight. But if you have questions, it'd be really good to ask Michelle while she's here.
And Chris, along those lines, just for the public, and you're right, I serve on that board when I can be there. And, you know, Michelle has done a great job for this community to keep us in the attainment. As you can see, we're at 67 parts. Michelle, has that been an ongoing? We have jumped over there a few times, haven't we, over the 70 parts a few times?
We've had one exceedance for this summer. Luckily, it's just been the one, that we hit at 80 on one particular day. The concern that I have is the fact that Cleburne, which is not very far away, has been the controlling monitor for the DFW area.
A lot of industry there, too.
And they're running about 76 right now. So they were passed, I believe, by one of the northern monitors, so their, DFW's non-attainment design value right now is sitting at 77. So we're at 10 parts per billion below that, but we're only nine parts per billion below our neighbor monitor in Cleburne. So it's with ozone, it's definitely, it's, emissions are a big part of it, but another big part of it is the weather. And so you are subject to the wind changes.
And, you know, like Chris mentioned, we started this in 2012, and in 2012, we were all in. Everybody was in. We had the chamber, we had the county, we had everybody, and that's, you know, and they're still in, I hope.
Absolutely.
But, you know, we've turned it over to Michelle and the team that she's got. I see Dave sitting out there, and Dave Porter out there. And her team has went, and they daily, they, every week, they meet and they talk about the things that we can do, just the little things that we can do to continue to be in that attainment area. And they're working. And, you know, but it's getting, as you can see, getting real close there. But when the, when the state or when the representatives start taking funding away, and like I say, they've allocated, it looks good when you look at the picture, $281,000, but when you look at 10% for this lady to go out every day, go to work for 40 hours, or how many hours she puts into this thing, not counting, you know, her, and the office administration, and all that good stuff that we do, $28,000 to keep us adamant, you know, to keep us in attainment, where, you know, to keep us from having, like Chris said, the inspection fees going up and all the things that would impact us, and especially bringing industries here, because that is a big deal. People ask that all the time when they come, and, you know, when they see that we are in attainment still, that's a plus for us. And we want to continue to do that, but it's hard to fund that with $28,000. So Michelle, I appreciate what you're doing over there, and I know the community does too, because, you know, we're breathing good clean air out here in Granbury, so that's good.
Absolutely, and we want to keep it that way.
We want to keep it that way, we really do. So Council, like Chris said, this is just an overview of what we're faced with and what we're doing, and we're going to reach out to the county, right, and get more people teamed up on this, so that, you know, maybe when they go into, you know, go into session next year, we can, we can be down there and we talk about this and get more funding for this, because it is important, but it's one of those that if everybody, nobody knows about it, it's an easy one to take away from.
Absolutely.
So we don't want to continue to do that. Mr. Allen, go ahead.
You know, you're absolutely right. I believe the county was really involved before Chris got here. Right, the judge, didn't he go to DC and fight this far for Hood County and the city?
Judge Cochrane, as well as Joey Grisham, who was the former economic development coordinator as well.
So I think he'd jump on board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've only got one more meeting, thank God, but you've done a great job.
I appreciate all the support over the years.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wiley, you got a question there or comment?
Yeah, that budget's a two-year budget, right?
Yes, it's for two years.
So $28,000 for two years?
Yes.
So if you work for about $8,000 or $10,000 a year, and we throw in some rent.
It's a little difficult of a budget to work with.
You should be paying us.
So I plan on, you know, in the coming days, putting together a package of where we might be able to pull this together and make it work with some mankind and maybe some of our budget. So we'll just have to figure it out and walk it together in the next few months, because as she said, we've got to have this resolved by the end of this year.
Right.
To open funding.
And I have asked a question, and several people have too, with me down in Austin, and we've talked about, well, where's the other, where's the other $200,000 go to, you know, and what's it used for? And they really don't give you a good answer for it, but, you know, we'll keep, we'll keep driving that bus and trying to figure out if there's things that we could be doing here and stuff like that, because we want to keep you on board, Michelle. We really do.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
So we plan to do continued monitoring.
Sure.
You know, and those kind of things that we've been doing, and there's science activities that have to take place that cost money, and that's what those dollars are budgeted for, for projects. We just don't have the admin side covered.
Absolutely.
Very good, very good. Council, any more questions or concerns for Michelle or staff on this item? Michelle, thank you very much for your presentation, and doing a good job out there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
At this time of the program, we are going to go into the citizens' participation, not to be confused with the citizens' comments regarding agenda items. The citizen participation is provided an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizen participation period at one of our citizen council meetings per month. Speakers are asked to fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the city secretary prior to the meeting in order for the city council to properly consider each matter brought to them by citizens. The speakers are asked to observe these following rules. One person may approach the microphone at one time. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual city council members, and the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make that information available to the city council and the city manager if requested. And we tried to allow three minutes per person to speak. And today, we have a speaker. We have a Gary A. Marcus, is that right?
Thank you for this time. I'm not a public speaker, so I've written down my comments.
Thank you.
And I've given you a copy of what I've written, and as well as photographs. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Gary Marcus, and I live at 1501 Lakeview Court, Granbury, Texas. Regarding my request dated September 24th, 2019, to the zoning board of adjustment to special exemption to Section 11.7.8.5, exterior building materials, roof and articulation standards in the residential district, to install solar panels on the front yard, street-facing roof slope. The property addressed at 1501 Lakeview Court, I request the opposition to my request for special exemption 11.7.8.5 be changed to "in favor" of requests due to the following reasons. One, solar panel usage is government-sponsored program. Two, before placement of my solar panels, an engineer came to my residence, surveyed my roof, and determined the most optimal placement for my solar panels. I was not aware the company had not obtained a variance to Section 11.7.8.5 of the zoning code. See photograph of my house. Three, the solar panels on the rear of the roof would have to be elevated with poles in order to attempt to reach the efficiency of the current street-facing solar panels. Those panels would still be seen from the roof, would be possible, be a possible danger to my next-door neighbor during a high wind, and possibly destroy the integrity of my roof due to a high wind. Four, according to the engineer whose company installed my solar panels, I would lose 15% efficiency of my solar panels if they were moved to the rear of the roof. Five, when the notice of public hearing was sent to 10 of my neighbors within 200 feet of my property, no one, I repeat, no one voiced opposition to my request. Six, I live behind an industrial area which doesn't reflect the most picturesque neighborhood setting. See attached photographs of that area. Seven, when the zoning board voted, they had to vote twice after Chairwoman Eileen Kate voiced, "I see no problem," unquote. The first vote was three in favor and two in opposition to the request. When reminded they needed four votes in favor of opposition to pass, a second vote was taken with all five in opposition to the request. So even a majority in the first vote had no problem with my request for special exemption in Section 11.7.8.58. As of September 30th, according to my solar edge monitoring system, the environmental benefits of my solar panels was CO2 emissions saved 4,635.01 pounds, equivalent trees planted Nine, as the God I worship is merciful and just, a just God, I request the city council and zoning board be merciful and just by allowing the solar panels on the street side to remain where they are and administering whatever fine justice they deem appropriate to the company that placed the solar panels without first obtaining a variance to the zoning code. Finally, I believe the company that placed my solar panels is being made an example at the expense of the integrity of my roof. Please just find them and leave my roof alone. Quote, "Let's keep working together to build a better Granbury using a common sense approach." Thank you.
Okay, we have no other speakers for the citizens' participation. At this time now, we will move into the citizens' comments regarding agenda items. With the recent passage of House Bill 2840, the Texas Open Meetings Act allows the public to address the city council regarding items that are on the agenda. The speakers are asked to complete and request to speak form and turn it into the city secretary prior to the meeting. Speakers are also asked to adhere to the same rules as described during the citizens' participation and outlined below. This time is allotted for public comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is open. Here again, only one person may approach the microphone at one time, and only the person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual city council members or the staff. And number three, the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make that information available to the city council and the city manager on request. Does anybody wish to speak on any of the agenda items at this time? Hearing none, we'll close the citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Next, we will move into the consent agenda. Council, we have a couple items on the consent agenda, that first one being consent. Council, we have a couple items on the consent agenda, that first one being, consider approving the city council meeting minutes of September 17th, 2019, joint workshop and the regular meeting. And number two, consider adopting ordinance number 1968, amending the operating budget for the general fund in the fiscal year 2019-2020. This is involving the chamber and the EDC. Those are the consent agenda items. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. At this time, do you wish to make any changes, or to speak on any of them, or to pull any of the agenda items off of the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda items.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda items?
Who were the two motions there, Mayor?
Pardon?
Who seconded the motion?
Well, I got...
I'll second it.
You said the same thing.
I got Tony Mobley and a second by Wadley, or was it you?
We were, four of us were in there.
All four of us?
Everybody.
Well, you know what, I'll get you the next go around. So, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Our next item is our deliberation agenda. That first item, we've got item number three and four, which is combined, which has an adoption of an ordinance for rezoning and execution letter of agreement, and an execution facility improvement, and a replat. Chris, do you have a staff report on this one?
Yes, sir, and we were provided a letter, a request to withdraw this project for consideration, and so we've provided you a copy of that this evening. And also, we need to figure out how to deal with this as it relates to the law, and Jeremy's been looking into that. But what we sincerely think that we're limited to being able to do is deny the project and move on, because the law allows us to approve it or deny it. And we can deny it, and the reason for the denial is for the request of withdrawal. So, I would go ahead and combine the two and open the public hearing. And I don't think we need a big explanation of what's going on, it's just a apartment project that the developer doesn't want to move forward with at this time, and we can say that during the public hearing and go on.
So, it sounds like we've got an item on here that the applicant has submitted a letter to withdraw the whole thing, and so we will go ahead and open the public hearing then? But since it is a public hearing, does anybody have any concerns or anybody want to speak on item number three or four before we withdraw this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do I have a motion?
I'm with you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny with prejudice based on the fact that the applicant has requested withdrawal and based on our staff's recommendation.
So, I have a motion to deny with prejudice. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Allen? Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those items will be withdrawn. Thank you, Council.
It says A and B, right?
Pardon?
Three and four.
Three and four.
Okay.
Our next will be item number five, which is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 197, approving a request of Shawn and Carmen Miniter for a specific use permit. Chris, do you have a staff report on that one?
You bet, I'll turn it over to Shad, he's got the P and Z report for you and complete you on it.
We'll get on that, just let me skip over here to the appropriate slide, I think I had quite a few for that one. Sorry about that.
While he's booting that up, it's for an S U P for a one-guest suite, unhosted bed and breakfast, located at 625 East Bridge Street.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you and good evening, Mayor. City Council, City Manager Shad Roten, Community Development. So, I'll just go through my slides real quickly, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. This is the property, it's highlighted in blue, so this is in a single-family residential neighborhood. It's currently zoned R8.4, that's a single-family district. Our zoning ordinance requires for the use of a bed and breakfast in a residential district that the applicant, the owner, obtain that S U P, so that's the request tonight. It's for a one-guest suite, unhosted bed and breakfast. The site's a little over .2 acres. One thing that I'll add to this is this portion of Bridge Street is not a public right-of-way, it's a private street. There's not a limitation in our zoning ordinance which would prohibit them from applying or being granted the S U P, however, that is discretionary consideration by the council for this application tonight. Again, just our definition of bed and breakfast unhosted, as well as our land use matrix, you can see the S under the R8.4, that's the S U P requirement, as well as supplemental standards 1 and 18 that apply here, and those are typically inspected or looked for when they do the CO inspection, their life safety inspection. Just to give you an idea of what those are, site plan requirement, that's really just to maintain and make sure they have adequate parking. For an unhosted bed and breakfast, they have to have one space per the guest suite. So, and then you've got your other supplemental standards under 18, which are related to food and signage and other things. So, here's a copy of our application and the site plan, so you can see the site plan on your right, the house itself, as well as the driveway and the parking space, I believe it's up under a carport. For notice, staff sent out 22 public notices to 200 feet, to all property owners went to 200 feet on August 8th. We also published in the Hood County News, and as of tonight, we have received three letters in favor and three letters in opposition to that request. Excuse me. The opposition area is noted here in red. The yellow buffer, you basically see around the subject property is the 200-foot notification. Properties in blue, we either received no notice or they were in favor. So, the total opposition area, based on staff's calculation, is 13.17%. So, that doesn't trigger any kind of a three-force vote. P and Z, they concurred with staff, they recommended approval by unanimous vote. With these three conditions, parking be inspected, the supplemental standards 1 and 18, again, be inspected with the CO, and that the specific use permit for this would expire one year from city council approval. If you act favorably on this request, that date would be October 1st, 2020. At that time, the applicant could come back if they want to pursue this and request a renewal of that S U P through P and Z and council. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you've got them for me.
Thank you, Shad. This is a public hearing, at this time I'll open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number five, six, I'm sorry. It was five, item number five, I'm sorry. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns to staff on item number five as presented?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley. Yeah, you, too.
So, it's, it seems that mostly the opposition had to do with the road. Is it your experience with, it's one room?
It's one guest suite, B and B, that's what the application is.
So, is it going to be any more traffic?
It's a two-bedroom house.
Right, but they're doing, but it's one room. So, what would you estimate would be the impact on that road if you have one room rented? I can't see it being an excessive amount of traffic, unless there's one heck of a... I mean, I could see if it was a dorm room, but not a regular room.
Yes, sir, I mean, I am not a traffic engineer by any means, but my assumption would be it's going to have a similar traffic effect that is if it was being used for a single-family residence.
Okay, thank you.
Who may change that road?
Mr. Allen?
Who may change the road?
That, it's, I can tell you it's not the city, so it's an easement, so as far as maintenance, I can't speak to that.
You'll see after here tonight.
Come on up, sir. Come on up.
You just thought you were getting away.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Shawn Mininger. My wife Carmen Mininger, she's at home.
You live in the house next to it, right?
No, I do not, I actually live in Burleson.
In Burleson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who pays for the road maintenance, use for that house?
We bought this house about this time last year, and to be honest with you, that was the, this process was the first I heard that it wasn't just a normal road. I know originally, the only thing we know, and some of this came from the fact that when we bought it, it was originally told, sold to us as 627, the 911 thing that was all readdressed. And so, quite frankly, you know, we may, there was no HOA or anything like that, and you know, we just drive to it and didn't know that it even was this whole private plat thing, and only until we started putting this in for the variance that we even, I even knew the idea of what the whole plat was, I knew that eventually, essentially it was a, one point in time, someone's property that they split up into different houses and built houses.
Who's going to rent out for you?
What's that?
Who's going to oversee the renters?
I do. We live, we live in Burleson, my wife grew up here in Granbury, we're here all the time. Her parents actually live on Tahiti Drive, so we're here all the time.
So, you're going to collect and clean it?
Oh, all that's handled by Airbnb and HomeAway.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, all that's done, taxes, we all take care of taxes, took care of that before the 25th of every month, so make sure that I, you know, get that 6% instead of 7%. So, that's all taken care of there. You know, I'll be quite frank with you, probably irrelevant, but part of the thing is, we bought it now, we're improving it as we continue to go. If you saw what it was before we bought and everything, and the plan is, my wife and I want to retire there once the kids are done, because we like Granbury.
Your taxes will go up now.
Yeah, I know.
I got a question for the, I guess, city manager. Do we, I mean, I see the applicant's kind of like, well, I didn't know this was a private road, but I mean, do we do that research when we look into properties like that that have a non-city street? Is it private road, I guess?
It's private roads, what I was told.
Do we check into that?
On the, on the, on the, on the P and Z item showed up, I saw it then, and that's when we talked about the road being private. Anyway, I drove out there today, and the road's currently paved, I don't know who paved it. Do you, Rick?
That's why I didn't, that's why I didn't know, I'm sorry. That's why I didn't even know, it was just an normal street to me.
The, it seems to me like when you buy a property and you're driving to it via an easement access, it should be disclosed at buying, at closing time, you know, you should learn the facts about access and restrictions and everything else associated with it. I do have a question, have you been renting it as Airbnb right now already? And so, you got a letter from our finance department, and that's what alerted you to the need to get it permitted, or what happened?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like I said, we focused on the taxes and everything, made sure that was taken care of, because that's one of the things that HomeAway and Airbnb says. They say, look, we'll help you set up and make sure you're paying state taxes. You'll need to make sure that you set up to any, you know, any income that comes in gets filed on your federal taxes, and then, of course, you need to, you need to be aware of what you're doing with the local city requirements. And so, we engaged and got that squared away, and we've been paying that all good. And so, as far as the zoning goes, yeah, I just didn't know. The minute we found out, we, you know, tried to get everything we could to get it taken care of. You know, we're good citizens, I'm a full Marine, I want to do everything the right way. If I'm doing something the wrong way, let me know, and I'll, we'll correct, take corrective action. And like I said, the goal is, my wife grew up here, her parents still live there, we come here all the time, and the goal is, we want to retire here. And so, the idea is, we just want to be good citizens, so the street thing surprised us too.
So, I rang the doorbell and...
I know, I saw.
You didn't talk to me, I was waiting for you.
I wasn't there, but, but I actually have one of those really smart doorbells that tell me.
Yeah, I saw that, I was waiting for somebody to talk to me.
Yeah, I was actually on a meeting, I was on a call during that moment, I was like, "Boo!" And I have video, basically, too, because I have cameras around it to make sure that we're keeping an eye on things.
You need to move from Burleson down to here. I'll give you a card after the deal.
Number six? No, this is...
Mr. Mayor.
No, this is five.
Five.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wadley.
I have a comment for the applicant. On one of the opposition letters, it says, it appears as though the property is already being used for a short-term rental with as many as six vehicles and a pontoon boat parked in the driveway with paving for two vehicles. Who enforces that? Like, if there's not enough parking, do you know what happened there or anything?
So, I do. What actually happened was, we, we had someone from the Census Bureau, and they had said that they were going to rent out the Airbnb for themselves, but all the other people were at the Hilton, and they wanted to host like a gathering that evening, and I don't know what the Census Bureau was doing, they were getting together some meeting anyway. And so, they said, can we do a gathering? Because specifically on those sites, we say, no events, no parties, no nothing like that. Quite frankly, it's my house, I don't want it torn up, right? I don't want it to be a party house. The majority of the people we have is only on weekends, and it's almost always, you know, like girls' nights and stuff, summertime, families coming in for a weekend at the beach. So, but she asked me, she said, is it okay if we do a little event? And I'm like, you know, Census Bureau folks, it's not like it's going to be some righteous party or something.
You never know, you've never heard of Census Bureau.
Well, maybe I was wrong, and unfortunately, what ended up happening is, is that all those people that were at the hotel did come over for the event, and they didn't tear up the house, the house was fine, but they all parked in the yard. And it was frustrating to me too, because when we bought the house, the yard wasn't in great shape, and I actually have, I have, we have a landscaper that takes care, but we're trying to actually, we've replanted all the bushes, we're trying to revive the yard and get it back into shape, because it was pretty neglected beforehand. And so, but what we did was, we changed the rule and said, no more than three cars, and when you book, it literally says, these are the rules. No more than three cars, and a trailer is considered a vehicle, no more than three vehicles, sorry, a trailer is considered a vehicle. And the reason for that is, if you look at the length of that driveway, you can easily park three vehicles, and I think you came by, you didn't pull all the way in, but you could see, you can easily park three vehicles. And then, we have that not only when they book, it's all part of the thing, and then on my email, every time someone books, we literally send an email and says, these are certain rules. And one of the top rules is no more than three vehicles, no parking on the grass. And it was actually because of that very event, I wasn't particularly thrilled that they parked on the grass, because it's my grass. And so, it is what it is, we learned from that, and on we go. Now, what you didn't see, because it's actually in my car right now, I actually even ordered a sign that I'm going to put up, I had to rush here from work, where I actually am going to put it on that little over the carport, a little sign that literally says, you know, do not park on the grass as well. And so, and I have video of everything, so, because we have the cameras that detect motion, that's how I was able to see you parking at the end and walking up and all that stuff.
I was expecting you to talk to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was on a meeting, I'm sorry. And so, that's what we're doing, and to be honest with you, I mean, I get you, I don't want, like I said, this is our house, our long-term plan is to retire to this house, so I don't want anyone tearing it up either. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, okay, Chris got one more question.
I think this is bigger than a one-bedroom house, isn't it?
It is a, it is technically, it has three bedrooms.
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out how we're going to monitor, it's a one-guest suite, and you got three rooms.
Oh, oh.
So, what's the deal with not asking for two rooms or more?
Because I don't want, in fact, I just had a comment, so what we do is, is that when you go into like Airbnb or HomeAway, we say, this is how many people it can accommodate total, okay? But we don't subdue any rooms, because I don't want that, I don't want to have shared spaces between people. When you, the reason why it's a one suite is because when you rent that, you rent the whole house. There is no, you get a part, you get a part, you get a part, which is what a lot of people do, they do an extra room here or something. I don't want any of that, you rent the whole house, you get the whole thing, the kitchen, the family room, the idea is, I want it to be a place for families to come. I want it to be a place where people can gather, I'm not interested in making it a in-and-out, in-and-out, in-and-out. We're very selective of who we try to rent to. We're very selective of who we try to rent to, because of that. Because like I said, I don't want to destroy my house. To the point where we do something that's commonly where if someone goes over like a, a certain number of people that come. So like four people, like two parents and their kids. Anything more than that, they actually get charged a little more, because we're trying to make sure we don't get, you know, full-up house, because it puts wear and tear on the house. It's usually weekends. You guys were talking about traffic. If you look at our bookings, it's almost always weekends. It's almost always people coming in, just wanting to get a girls' night, girls' weekend is usually, wow, I did not have any idea how much girls' weekends happen. But, but a lot of girls' weekends, people coming to the square. Because our, our location is kind of cool, because it's across the street from the park, walking distance through the park to the beach. And then a long walk down to the square, which is what we love. So.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counsel, any more questions for the applicant? Carla, help me out here. Where are we at here?
I know, I'm a talker.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I think we did close the public hearing though, right? Okay. So counsel, I entertain a motion to, to consider the, the conditional approval with the said conditions. I have that motion by, Mr. Corgan?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item number five? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Get ready, somebody probably going to bill you for that road that they tired during the nighttime. Number six, is a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 1971. Here again, we'll call upon Shad to give us a staff report on that.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a very similar request to the last agenda item. This property is located on Moore Street. If you're familiar where the old Heritage Manor was, it's right to the north of that property. This property is zoned R12, so it's approximately 30,000 square feet. Pretty large lot. It's a single-family residence. The applicant has recently constructed an accessory kind of dwelling unit on the back portion of the property. And I've got a, a site plan that'll show you where that is. And the S U P request applies to that building. That's what they'll be renting out for the B and B. So here, you can see the property, a close-up. The house, obviously, the drive. If you'll notice over here, they have a two-car enclosed garage for the primary residence and then a long U-shaped driveway. I apologize for keep doing that. So they'll have adequate space for ultimately three parking spaces of what they'll need. The guest suite that you see in the back, the one-story building, that's where the, the bed and breakfast use is proposed. So again, S U P being a residential district, that, that is required. The definition for unhosted residential B and B is here for your reference, as well as the supplemental standards, the exact same from the previous agenda item. As far as notices, we sent out six public notices and published this request in the newspaper, both on August 8. And as of tonight, we received zero, zero letters, excuse me, in favor and zero letters in opposition to the request. P and Z's recommendation, they concurred with staff by unanimous 5-0 vote with the following conditions. These are the same conditions that we imposed on the last S U P. Parking inspection supplemental standards 1 and 18, and a one-year expiration from city council approval. So again, expiring October 1st, 2020. And that concludes my presentation. I will turn it back over to you, Mayor. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Shad. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up for the public to speak on this item. Anybody in the public wishing to speak on this item? Are the applicants out there with us tonight? Okay, so they are. Okay, thank you. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns from Shad or the staff or the applicant that's out there? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to recommend the conditional approval with the said conditions. I have that motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Counsel, any more discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Item, number six is approved. Item number seven is a public hearing, consider approving a request of Teresa McGonigal to final plat a .3 acre tract of Lime County School Land Survey as Lot 1. Here again, we'll call upon Shad to give us a staff report on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You saw the preliminary plat for this on the last meeting, so they're coming back with a subsequent final plat. The purpose of this is to remodel the existing building on site. It's a law office. Based on their remodel, it triggered the plating requirements. It's currently described by survey. So it's a little under half an acre. John McGonigal is the property owner and prospect surveying, was their surveyor. The property is zoned like commercial, so that will support the office use. It's been zoned that way since 2001. So again, a preliminary plat was approved on September 3rd, 2019. Apologize for maybe not being able to see this that well. This is a copy of the plat. One thing to note is there was a sanitary sewer line running through the rear portion of the property. So one thing we were able to get out of this was an easement. So that's dedicated towards the southern portion of the property. We'll also have a right-of-way dedication on Pearl Street. It's required to be a 60-foot right-of-way per our thoroughfare plan, and it's 50, so they're required to dedicate half the difference or five feet. That's also depicted on this plat as well. If you can follow this, this is just a general location of where the parking and, the, the new parking and some landscape improvements will be provided. One thing to note, typically with final plats, we'll have a facilities improvement agreement. In this specific plat request, we don't. Utilities are currently installed. That's going to be water sewer. We had some variances for those, as well as street lights across the street. The only improvement that they will be providing is the sidewalk, and that'll run concurrent with the actual building permit when they start the remodel work. So these were the variances that were approved with the preliminary plat. 31 and 410 to not improve Pearl, that's a text dot right-of-way. 39 and 45 not to extend an eight-inch sewer main through Pearl. There's currently one, again, that runs through the southern portion of the property. And then 39 and 46 to not upsize an existing six-inch water line located in the Pearl Street frontage to an eight-inch standard. This is our formal application, and we don't have any variances associated with this plat tonight. P and Z concurred with staff and recommended approval of this plat by unanimous 5-0 vote. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor. I'll turn it back over to you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Shad. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing to the public. Item number seven, does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? The applicant out there? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion or any questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
Don't move.
I have that motion by Councilman Person Reiner and Councilman Wadley. He's just looking at me. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider adopting resolution number 1926. And I'm going to turn this over to Chris Kaufman with a, can you give us a staff report on that one, please?
Yes, as you'll recall, we're in the process of expanding our water treatment plant. We've already approved a guaranteed maximum price for phase one, for part one. And now we're working on the final part to get everything wrapped up. And so we've got a guaranteed maximum price, which is called GMP number two, proposed for you in your packet. We do have a host of expert speakers here that can address this. I'm looking out there. But it looks like we'll queue up Chris Hay with the protect Hibbs and Todd to tell us a little bit about this and answer any questions you may have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. He did a good job of kind of the background. So tonight, we do, we are presenting guaranteed maximum price proposal number two for the water treatment plant phase two expansion. As Mr. Kaufman mentioned, you previously approved a contract estimated to be $11.7 million. And then guaranteed maximum price proposal one, at a little over $7 million. This GMP two tonight replaces GMP one and includes the total scope of work for the project. Approval of this will allow the construction manager at risk to proceed with bidding out the remaining packages of the project and to move forward with construction of those as well. So tonight, before you, you have GMP number two proposal for $11,825,160. As you may note, that's $125,000, $160 over the estimated $11.7 million. The difference there being the previously authorized approval of the architectural improvements for the clear well in front of the water treatment plant. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to expand on that or add anything to the information presented tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for the speaker?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Can you be a little more clear on where the extra came from? I mean, it's only 1, 1.2% higher than what we estimated, but what is that? What is that force?
It's the architectural features on the water tank.
Okay.
That we approved at the last meeting, that 125.
Yeah, it's the, it's, we're doing a facade, arches on the, the tank. Yes, and, and the city logo as well, so.
It's true, Chris, they're going to put an OU up there.
I'm not OU, believe me.
I'm sure we are going to get some help on what we put up there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've, we've got it done. We don't need any more advice.
You know, you're going to, you're going to get it.
Believe me, we've had all the advice we can handle. Y'all have already seen a picture of it.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Thank you. You guys are doing a good job out there. Appreciate you guys.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Well, counsel, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 1926 for that said project. I have that motion by Councilman Person Reiner and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider adopting ordinance number 1972, disputed generation interconnection application and disputed generation agreement. And I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on that one, if you would please.
All right. Well, tonight, we have Ned Brown with Schneider Engineering with us. Has been working on us to develop this policy and this application and this agreement that's before you tonight. I would like to say that he's going to give us a PowerPoint slide presentation and, and go through what we're talking about here, so that everybody will understand what distributed energy interconnection means and, and how that affects the individuals like Ms. Cockandall that's sitting in the audience that has solar panels in her house, that's producing energy for the city at times, that needs to be compensated for it. So we've come a long way in a short amount of time. It seems like forever to them, I'm sure. But a lot, a lot of work went into this to get it to this point. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Brown and take it away.
Very good. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to be here tonight. As Chris indicated, we're, we're engaged with the city to assist with the development of distributed generation policies and procedures for the city. Just as a note, we've, our firm, Schneider Engineering, has worked with about probably a dozen cities over the last four or five years. So you're not alone. Cities, as, as these systems become more popular, many cities have found themselves in need of developing these types of policies. And as Chris mentioned, we, we feel like it's probably a good thing to start with a little education, so that everybody has a basic understanding of what we're talking about before we dive into a discussion of the ordinance and the associated documents with that and procedures. So with that, you know, we kind of think there's, there's some questions that flow logically, starting with what is distributed generation? How does it work? What does the city need to do in terms of policies and procedures for these, interconnection of these systems? What kind of systems can you realistically anticipate? You know, what are some of the, there's some, probably some good rules of thumb, again, that provide some basic understanding and education about these systems. What do you need to do to be prepared for these installations, the various departments of the city? And then, you know, what are some good questions? If I was sitting in your chair, what are some of the good questions and, and associated answers that, that should be asked and contemplated? So with that, starting with the definition, and this is, it's, it's a little bit interesting. We borrow, we, we feel like while cities are not under the PUC jurisdiction for this, the PUC has developed a distributed generation rule that really dates back to some of the co-generation days in the, you know, in the 90s and when that was kind of a thing. The PUC got out in front of it and developed some formal rules. Investor-owned utilities that are regulated by the PUC have to adhere to these rules. So again, while the city is not under the PUC on this, we feel like it's, makes a lot of sense to align with what other electric utilities are doing in the state and what the PUC rules are. So their definition is it really boils down to two things. It's the size, which can be up to 10 megawatts, which is a, that's a, like a power plant. And while, that, that really, again, ties back to in some of the co-generation industrial applications of co-generation, these were very large systems. In reality, you'll never see something interconnected in your city at that kind of size. And we'll talk more about that in a moment. But the real, the real definition for distributed generation is the voltage it's interconnected at. You can see if you drive out to West Texas and you see all the big wind farms and the, even now, the big solar farms, those are connecting into the transmission grid. Distributed generation means it's connected in, it's a distribution voltage, which in ERCOT in, in Texas is less than, the, the transmission grid is 345 KV, 138 KV, and 69 KV. So the threshold set by the PUC is 60 KV. Your system operates, I believe, at 14.4, 12.5, 12.5, so 12.5 is less than 60. So that's really the definition that we're going to be basing our guidelines. If it's, if it's connected to the city's distribution system, then it's considered distributed generation. And just another note, you could see fairly large on a, on a commercial application, you could see hundreds of KW type-sized system, even something approaching a megawatt. I know the Amazon Distribution Center down in San Marcos has, you know, a very large system that's over a megawatt. So it's not out of the realm to get to the megawatt level connected at distribution voltage or interconnected. But again, that's about as big a system as you would ever anticipate. Mostly, and I have the, the picture here, that, the size on that roof is probably about 2 KW. That's really, you're going to see most, at most systems in less than 10. Anything above 10 to 20, you can probably look in at more of a commercial type installation. So just some definitions around, around what distribute, distributed generation is. The short for it is DG, so you'll hear it commonly referred to as DG. So how does it work? Well, it starts with, more and more, it's, it's solar photovoltaic or PV panels. But it can also be wind and it could also be even a, you know, some type of fossil fuel distributed generation. But by and large, what we're seeing in, you know, 99% of the applications is wind and solar and probably 90% plus is solar. And that's due, as we'll talk about, for certain, certain price and economic factors. But the way it works, so the, the solar panel creates the, is where the energy is taken from the sun and it turns it into electricity. And that runs into an inverter, which changes the voltage from DC to AC so that the load in the house or the, or the commercial building can actually use that energy. It has to be converted to AC power. So then, if you have refrigerator, air conditioning lights, whatever is running, whatever the load is, that power is, is connected in with the house wiring and it's being used by the various loads in the house most of the time. If for some reason, the, you know, all the lights are off and the air conditioner is not running, there, there could be some intervals where a typical-sized system may actually then have excess power that's not being used by the load. And that would actually... then have excess power that's not being used by the load, and that would actually flow back through the city's meter to the city's electric grid. So i- if it's a properly sized installation, that's gonna be pretty rare, but as we'll see, there, there are some instances where, where it could be even designed to do that. We'll talk about that. So why do you need DG policies? Well, first thing is, Texas is in a pretty good solar area. You can see from the map, the further to the southwest we get, and in the United States, the better it gets, the dark red is the optimum, but you can see Granberry sits in, you know, kind of right on the line of where it gets from good to really good. So you're in a good area. The second factor is costs have dropped dramatically. I think several years ago, there was a lot of press about that the Chinese were dumping solar panels into our market to run US solar panel producers out of business. That probably happened, and what it, what it amounted to was, it, it, there's probably not many solar panel manufacturers in the US, but the solar installers are going to town because the prices come down so dramatically on those panels. Just an anecdote on that, I was involved with a grant project 12, 15 years ago, and it cost about $10,000 per KW to install a solar panel. It was, you know, it had no kind of payback, it was really kind of for education and, and research at that point. And those costs have dropped just straight down over the last six, eight years, and now the economics are actually, have changed from it would never pay back to now the paybacks with federal tax incentives are actually within the life of these systems. So they're getting better all the time as the price to, of, of the, the panels themselves and the systems themselves, the inverters, all those prices continue to drop, so the economics just continue to get better and better. So Texas is a big market, and you're seeing a lot of activity. Austin, San Antonio, the Metroplex, but, you know, City of Austin was an early adopter, so, so there's quite a robust installation and vendor community in Texas. So all utilities, not just municipals, but across the state, even in the Houston market, but the further west you go, the better the economics get. So all utilities are seeing a, a real spike in applications for these type of systems. And as I mentioned, the paybacks are just getting better, and what, you know, it's important for you to have sound policies because your customers that are considering installation of these systems, that their economics are influenced by the policies you've put in place. So, so you, the policies that you establish are, are important as far as, again, people making decisions to install DG systems. So why do you need policies? Well, well, number one, you know, our recommendation as an engineering firm to all our clients is you need sound DG policies for the installation and interconnection, parallel operation of these systems, first and foremost, because of safety. There is a safety issue related to these that we'll talk more about. I guess, just touching on that, the good news is the, the industry, the DG industry, the photovoltaic industry has done a very good job of establishing, you know, UL and IEEE certifications and standards so that now you don't have to, if, if they have the right certification stamps, you know they're safe, and that's a good thing. So you don't have to have an engineer come look at each one. We're looking for the right UL and IEEE stamps, which, which address the safety issue. And then the second part of the safety is it's gotta, you don't want these systems installed that are gonna do any harm to your electric system, the neighbors down the line from these systems. So it's important, again, that they meet the right standards and have the, if they are a large system, they probably need an engineering analysis to make sure there's not gonna be any power quality issues. Again, so it's safety in the real sense, but also safety to not harm your distribution system is really why you need good, good policies and procedures. So what can we expect? Most cases, and I, again, have some pictures here, if it's a set of panels, like the top picture on that house that is approximately 2 to 3 KW, most of the output of that system is gonna be used by the household or the business's own load. That energy's not gonna come back to the meter, it's not gonna come back to your system. That's actually ideal for the folks that are installing these because displacing a full retail kilowatt hour of electricity from y'all is where they get the biggest bang for their buck in terms of economics. So, so small sized, properly sized DG systems are gonna be, you know, the vast majority of what you see installed is, is our projection. There could be a case where that same system, if the folks go on vacation and turn off everything, or even in a normal scenario, if it's a very mild day and the sun's out and there's no heating cooling and the refrigerator's not running, there could be intervals during the day where a little bit of energy comes back to you, but it'd be very de minimis and not a, not a, a big, most of the output is gonna be used by the home or the business in the vast majority of the cases. There could be, and this probably relates more to co-ops than, than cities, but I could see a scenario where if there was a rental or something where it has a panel that's generating, has a system that's generating energy and there's nobody there and everything's turned off, then most of that energy or all of that energy could flow back to the city. Again, that's kind of the hunting cabin scenario that probably co-ops are looking at more than, more than the city, but that, that is a possibility. And then the last scenario we can see is somebody that gets the idea that they could, you know, kind of go merchant with this and put in a large system on a, on some lots, you know, depending on the code restrictions, and with the game plan of trying to be a, you know, an energy producer, a generator, and sell all of it or most of it back to the city. And you'll see there's some, some reasons and some barriers based on, on, on your rates that, that probably wouldn't make sense and probably not really, you know, those things are best done out in West Texas where you get economies of scale. And if, you know, if you want to be a generator, there's, there's a right way to do that, and it's probably not in this kind of application. So I said I'd talk about some rules of thumb just real quickly. So the, the first rule of thumb is it takes about 70 or 80 square feet of roof area for those four solar panels to generate a 1 KW. So I guess that's a couple sheets of plywood size is 1 KW. 1 KW, oh, the second rule of thumb is, on the utility scale, that same kind of ratio holds, but, you know, it takes about seven acres or seven plus acres for a megawatt. That's a thousand KW. And I don't know if that picture is actually, it looks like a megawatt at least, and maybe more than that. But you can see if somebody wanted to do a megawatt system in the city, they'd need about 10 acres of property to even, you know, have that be feasible. And probably the most important rule of thumb is for each installed KW, assuming it's facing south at the right angle, but, you know, give or take, is gonna produce about 1,500 kilowatt hours per KW per year. So that, that picture of the house that had the 2 KW system is probably gonna generate about 3,000 kilowatt hours of energy over the course of the year. And, you know, I would say your average residential consumer, give or take, probably consumes about 1,500 kilowatt hours per month, and maybe a little higher all electric versus natural gas heating. But you can see that if, if on my house, if I put a 1 KW system, that would be just about offsetting one month of my normal usage on my house. So it gives you a feel, if you wanted to do, you know, kind of get off the grid and supply all your own energy, you'd need a big roof or a piece of property and it would be pretty expensive. So hopefully that gives you a feel for kind of what we're talking about. So how much does it cost? Again, the price is 10, 15 years ago is $10,000 a KW, now it's down to probably 2,000, it depends on the bells and whistles and the features you get with it, but the point being that the price has dropped dramatically and is continuing to come down. And then for utility scale systems, it's even maybe under $1,000 a, a KW. But that's, when they do those kind of systems, that's their, their capital cost, their main cost is the land. The systems are, you know, again, economies of scale, they get pretty cheap for the actual panels and the inverters. But when they go to sell that energy, they do it through, you know, purchase power agreement and sell it on a per megawatt hour basis. So it's a little hard, the per megawatt hour, just, you know, to compare it to wind. Solar is getting down to, you know, the same kind of general neighborhood as wind is in terms of PPAs, you know, somewhere in the $30 or even less per megawatt hour range. So I know I'm kind of going through that all fast, but what we're leading to is, so, and I have a typo there, should say, what does Granberry need to do to be ready? And so our recommendation is you, you need, you know, a good set of guidelines and policies related to the interconnection and the parallel operation of these systems. So that starts with the ordinance. Typically, our kind of template that we've developed, the ordinance borrows from the PUC technical standards, so aligning with the PUC's technical standards just give you a strong foundation, and you know it's been vetted and, and, again, it's used by the investor-owned utilities, so the encores and the center points in ERCOT are, are basing their, their guidelines on those same standards. What goes with that, we'll, we'll get into that in more detail, but the, the technical standards and the main procedural guidelines are contained in the ordinance, but there's also application that's, that's an attachment, and then the agreement. We, you know, recommend that every customer that has, installs a DG system that's interconnected with your distribution system enters into an agreement with you in terms of, so it's checking the boxes on the safety and the technical standards, it sets forth the, the procedural installation process guidelines, and it also addresses the, when energy does come back through the meter to the city, it addresses what reimbursement level they can expect and that you will allow. That's all your jurisdiction and your call, and, and we have recommendations along that and have drafted that and put that together for y'all. So, you know, the last piece is really a kind of a customer-facing documents and, and content for your website that helps summarize it, you know, we recommend kind of a nice Q and A format that walks people through, if you're thinking about it, the first thing to do is call the city, make sure that you understand the technical requirements, procedural requirements, how the rate's gonna work, and so that there's no surprises. So there's a, there's a customer-facing aspect to being ready to, to work with this as well. One other comment, your metering system, your AMI metering systems you're putting in, I think you're well on your way to getting full installation there. Those meters will, will handle both, they'll, they're set where they can easily be programmed to measure not only what you sell to the customer, but what the customer sends back to you. So there won't need to be any second meters or, or extra special meters on these systems. Your standard AMI meter is gonna do a good job of, of tracking that and sending that information onto your billing system. So the, kind of the last slide here is, you know, where is it gonna impact? It's not gonna hit just one city department, it's gonna kind of spread throughout the city department. There's a, again, a customer service and, and communications aspect. You want your customers, obviously, to be well-informed as they start thinking about installing one of these. And probably, you know, the, the, the marketing, the vendors are out there, marketing is pretty strong, so definitely the city wants to get the message out to, if you are approached, talk to us before you get too far in the process. Code enforcement, these have to be wired to electric code. The, the order, the DG, DG ordinance does not address the building code side, that's a separate set of factors. This is really just for the technical interconnection and operation of these systems, but your electric code folks are gonna wanna make sure they're, they're wired according to your code. The city manager's office will be involved in, in the agreements and executing a DG agreement with every customer that installs and operates one of these systems. And then your billing folks, again, from the, the metering system will automatically send the right information, but your billing system has to be programmed to make sure that they, you count the, the right energy that you're selling and, and the energy that's coming back. So it is not just gonna hit one area of the city, it, it'll impact various departments and personnel. So to the, kind of the good questions to ask, if, if I was sitting in your seat, and I'm having to read my questions here, the systems, do, do they pose a safety risk? Tech, you know, theoretically, yes, but the, again, the industry has done a great job of policing themselves, you know, they, they didn't wanna have, to have every one of these systems looked at by an engineer and certified, so they got together. The main safety standard comes in with the inverter. The inverters to, to change it from DC to AC has to have the, the source of the grid. As soon as there's an outage, the inverter stops the flow of the electricity from the panel, from the system back to the inverter. So it's, it's, the standard is a UL standard, and there's an IEEE standard as well that, again, if it has that stamp of certification, you can rest assured that your linemen are not at any risk. The physics of it is if, if the grid goes down and it loses a source of power, the system cannot send back energy to the grid. So there's still, we go beyond that and put a manual disconnect require, in the ordinance a manual disconnect, so if there's a big power outage and your line crews wanna know where these systems are and wanna go throw that manual disconnect just to make sure that there's no way of backflow, there's a, there's that second safety system, but again, the inverter manufacturers have done a good job of setting that standard for themselves. So, so safety is important, but these things cannot backfeed in the situation of a power outage. The second question that comes to mind is what about city revenue? You sell electricity and your rates are set up to collect revenue so you can operate and maintain your electric distribution system. So if, if you're losing 1,500 kilowatt hours a year and your rate is set up to recover cost of service on a per kilowatt hour basis, yes, you're gonna lose some revenue. In the scheme of things, that's, that's pretty de minimis when you're only talking about a handful of systems, you're not gonna see it appear in your financials, but you know it's happening. So it is something that, to address and to think about, you know, at some point, it could, you know, if these things, the cost continues to come down and you start seeing 10, 20% penetration, then it would have a measurable impact. Now, I'm sure the city's growing, it's, it's really just eating into your growth level a little bit at the, at the, with the number of systems that you have currently and probably projected for the next few years. But it is something to keep in mind. The third one, reimbursement, why do you have to reimburse, excuse me, for energy that's sent back to your system? This actually traces back to the Energy Policy Act in the Carter administration. That was when, really for the first time, that was when COGEN was happening, and PURPA, the, the law that came out of the Energy Policy Act, required electric utilities to purchase distributed generation output. It didn't, it said, it didn't say what rate you had to purchase it, it gave guidelines that you should repurchase that at the avoided cost of supplying it. So that really tracks back a lot, many decades ago to PURPA, and it's kind of known in the, in the industry as the must-purchase clause. So you do have to purchase it, but you get to set the rate that you purchase it at, and we'll be talking about that. Do you need to change your rate structure? Our recommendation is, it, not now, it not, it could reach a point where you could do some things with your rate by raising your availability or your customer charge, you could put your distribution cost of service revenue, you could move it from a per kilowatt hour into more of a fixed charge, facility charge, and, you know, if it ever, you've gotta, you still have to, again, maintain and operate your electric distribution system. So if these systems become, you know, just where every house has them, then, yeah, our recommendation would be to take a look at your rate structure and possibly make some changes at that time. And again, back to the what rate to reimburse, we- We believe the avoided cost of energy, y'all purchase wholesale power from multiple suppliers. That's probably the right way to look at this is while it may be small, one of your customers that's selling energy back to you, that kilowatt hour really has the same value as a kilowatt hour coming off one of your contracts. So pegging your reimbursement rate to your average cost of wholesale power for generation is our recommendation. It's fair. It's defensible. You can look that customer in the eye and say, "Look, we're treating you just like any other supplier." You can also look your other customers in the eye that don't have solar, don't have the right, you know, angle in the roof or just aren't interested. What you don't want to have is a subsidy where you're, you know, treating and overpaying for that energy and then, you know, shifting a burden, creating a subsidy to your other ratepayers. So we think there's a right way to do that. There's a fair way. It's defensible. Many other utilities are benchmarking and using that same policy guidelines. So with that, I know I kind of ran through that pretty fast. Oh, back to the customer information. Having a good brochure, having good content on your website, having a handout for the installers, just so that everybody knows what your requirements are. We think that's an important piece, you know, to go beyond the ordinance and to provide that collateral information just so that people have a good experience. It's a growing trend. We're going to see more and more of it, and, you know, I think just being able to not have any surprises and challenging situations, to have that go smoothly is certainly the goal. But I'd be glad to answer any questions.
What happens if you get into a situation where you're... I don't know that this would happen, but it's possible, you know, where you're actually... You've got property on the county, the city line, so you're going to put the solar panels in the county area, but you're going to distribute it to your property in the city?
But that's actually come up in one of our clients, serves outside the city. So a couple things. Code doesn't kick in out there.
Out there, yeah.
But if it's connected to your distribution system, everything else. So you still, the technical requirements, because it's about the safe interconnection and operation. So you still can require the same technical standards be met, same rate would apply. Everything would be the same except, I guess, the building and the electric code. But our experience where that situation, you know, I'll make comment, the vendor, the solar vendors, there's, you know, there's some stories of them being pushy and overpromising, but they also, they have to be certified, and their reputation's online. We've seen a lot of quality installers surface over the last several years because it's, again, if they want to do repeat sales, they don't want to have problems, and they don't want to get known in a city as have not followed the rules. So they've cooperated, and they're licensed electricians, so we haven't seen that be an issue.
And that was my concern, is the safety factor of that, you know, we're protected at one end but not the other end, so.
They're, again, they're licensed electricians by the state, so that's certainly...
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
Thank you. Man, I learned a lot tonight. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
It was really good and education to me. I'm probably the dumbest one up here, but I don't want to admit it, but that was really good. I got about three questions for you. HOAs, let's say you're, you know, within the city limits, and HOA says not have them. Can the city overrule the HOA or not?
I'm sorry, I'm not an HOA expert.
No. He said no.
Attorney says no.
Okay, so the HOA is the rules are rules, right? Okay. Thank you there, both of you guys. The next one was, let's say United Co-op is in the city a lot. I live in city limits, but they're my supplier. If they go and say somebody puts it on in the city on United Co-op, the city gets nothing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not on our grid.
And it's a lot of, I don't know what the percentage is, but I bet it's more on United than it is on the city. Is that right?
This ordinance doesn't apply to United. It only applies to our electrical system.
Okay, but what I'm getting at, we haven't had but one or two of these proppings before us, I think. I knew about one before this one, and we never had done it before. I remember the guy talking to me, and he talked to Chris, and they got it worked out, and there's those gentlemen tonight. But I don't know what it costs to get all this done, but my question, and I only got one more meeting, but is it worth spending this kind of money, and I don't know what your charge is, I'm not going to ask you, to do this at this stage if we're not getting more than one a year requests?
Let me answer that question. So he doesn't put these systems in. He's an engineering consultant we hired to help us draft this policy.
But he is going to draft it.
It's already drafted in your packet ready.
Okay, so that's it. Okay.
So now then, we need to be ready for whoever comes along. We've got two or three out there. In fact, Ava's got a list of about six or eight.
Okay, I didn't know that.
People that have solar power on their homes that we didn't know about till we started scratching around and figuring this out.
Okay. I didn't know it, and I apologize. But the last question is, and you answered it, I believe, you said very rarely does a home make more energy than what they use. And that's because they don't put enough panels up? Is that what it is?
Well, you know, it's a real-time thing. So if you have, it's a sunny day, and you have your 1KW system outputting at 1KW, you know, nameplate, if you have lights or a refrigerator going, it's not going to overcome that load in your house. That's a pretty low threshold. But if you had a larger house with a 10KW system, there's no heating and cooling going, there's no refrigeration running, then the output could be more than the load, and there could be some intervals where that energy is coming back to the city. Again, a properly-sized system to the size of the house, that's going to be pretty rare, but it'll happen in certain intervals with mild, really with no heating and cooling's going on, and it's very sunny. It's kind of the scenario.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And Councilman Allen, the ordinance is to provide for the orderly, safe, and effective interconnection and the parallel operations of distribution generated for the facility of the city of Granbury. And, you know, I got to apologize, I was comparing going over into the county versus the city, where in our cases, it's not really county, it could be just anybody, because we've got literally United Co-op on one side of the street, maybe, and where you have the city electricity on the other side. That's how close they are and wherever the borderlines are and stuff. They're still being in the city limits.
Well, then, and that's...
And they're in our United. If it's installed on United, they ought to run through your code department.
But it wouldn't, this ordinance wouldn't apply.
Okay.
That's on 377.
I would say that the question was just asked to me, if United had an agreement similar to this, and we don't know that, but the law requires us to pay for this electricity that's being put onto our grid. And so that's... The real driving force of this whole issue was we had citizens come and stand at the dice and explain, you know, "I'm putting electricity on your grid, and I'm not getting paid for it." And so that was the driver to get this going. Once we learned that there's a whole lot more to it than that, we put together a pretty comprehensive ordinance that allows us to do that. Now, before you actually vote on this ordinance, I would like to have y'all go into executive session and talk about utility rates and how it breaks down and what we pay for electricity and how we need to bill the reimbursed these people for their electricity that we're buying from them as another provider. And so we'll talk about that in closed session as allowed by the state law.
And I believe he said that this recommendation was what we're paying wholesale.
Yeah, there's a lot of other costs included in your bill, ERCOT charges and transmission fees and transmission operating costs, and there's a whole litany of add-ons that we get from different entities across the state that helps make up the total bill. So we need to talk about that.
So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and go into executive session to discuss further on this item.
So moved.
I got that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Reiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will go into executive session at this time. Let me read off my own deal. So now declaring that Granbury City Council reconvened in an open session that all the members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section. 551086, contain public power utilities. 551071, consultation with the attorney. 551072, deliberation regarding economic development. And 551074, personnel matters for the city secretary annual review. We will now go into executive session. Reconvened in an open session, and there was no action taken in an executive session. We now go back into the item number I, nine, considering adopting ordinance number 1972. Council, after discussion and executive session, do you have any recommendations on this item?
Mayor, I'd like to call on Ned to summarize the discussed action.
Yes, sir. The ordinance is drafted. We recommend for approval. It has all the technical, procedural, and policy requirements that we believe will put the city in the right footing for the installation and safe installation and interconnection and parallel operation of all DG systems. The exhibit for the application, we recommend that is good to go. In the agreement, there is one minor change that we want to recommend in Article 6, monthly distribution generation system capacity charge. We recommend striking in the second line of $2 per, to remove that. And so it'll read, there will be in addition to the minimum monthly bill requirements under the applicable service rate schedules, a customer distribution generation system capacity charge, the DG SCC service charge, add the word "based" on the DG system nameplate KW per month. And with that change, I believe the exhibit, the agreement in probably Exhibit A or Exhibit 1 is also solid, and we recommend that you adopt that.
So council, I'll entertain a motion then to consider adopting ordinance number 1972 with those said conditions that was laid out by Mr. Brown.
So moved.
Second.
And I have that motion by Councilman Wadley, and a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on this? Hear none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number nine with those conditions. I'll now declare once again that the Granbury City Council is convened in an open session that all members are present, and the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections. Consultation with our attorney, 055551071. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And 551074, personnel matters for the city secretary's annual review. We will now go back into executive session. In session, there was no action taken in an executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to make a motion that in order to get her salary more in line with similar cities in the state, that we amend the city secretary's salary to $65,000 for the fiscal year 2019, 2020.
So we have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
Ooh, we got a bunch of seconds there. We'll give that one to Tony Allen.
Oh, my goodness. Bruce deserved it.
Give it to me. He deserves it.
I worked hard for that second.
I think Bruce wrote it back.
So we got a motion and a second. Council, any more discussion? Anything you'd like to say about that, Bruce? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Is there any more discussion, council? Hearing none? The council meeting is now adjourned.